Alright, so yeah, let's call order. 4:33.
Oh, I don't know if you want to wait for Robin Sue with, is she making progress with that? I think you can go ahead, Kristy, if you want.
So we have, did I just say the names?
Yeah.
Me, I have Mark, Dwayne, Robin Sue, Marie Arcro, Heather Webster, and Barb Neely, and Josh, they're doing tech support. Present. Did we get a voucher? I didn't see a voucher this.
I think the last one that you received and approved is, is all we have, and there's another one that'll be coming in the queue in the next couple of weeks. So, nothing went out today.
Keep your eye on that. I don't know if you guys saw the minutes that were attached. I think there's a bunch of errors in the minutes.
Okay, so I may have screwed up on that. I was playing around, so I'll get them out.
Alright, so would I just like wait to vote on those at the next meeting?
Sure, that's fine.
Sorry, did you see my email?
Yeah, I just did.
Yeah, so.
I just saw that too, thank you.
I think you just got typed over.
That's what I'm thinking. I just have to restore the history of it.
Okay. So then we'll, well, do we have to vote or not voting?
No, I mean, if you're, no, if there's no, you can just pass until the next meeting. You can, there's nothing to approve if you're, if you're not ready to approve them.
Okay, and then Barb, principals report.
Alright, let me find it. Yeah. Good grief. Hold on.
Sorry, we should have given you a couple of minutes to.
Well, no, that's alright. Just everything was set up on the computer to type and get all the minutes done. But the iPad wouldn't open up. So, therefore, I'm trying to do both at the same time, and it's just always a challenge. Okay, so, um, everyone should have seen them. We're still anticipating about forty-five for kindergarten enrollment. The leadership team met with Julie Meltzer, well, probably two weeks ago now, and started to look at school improvement goals for 2021. And our focus is going to continue to be on that school culture piece, just realizing that when we get back to school, the social emotional learning is just going to be huge. It's the building, the connections, perseverance, perspective of others, resiliency, mindfulness, things like that. And then we're also going to be continuing with our response to intervention with both math and literacy. The main department of ed is distributing a survey for parents and staff that will help them develop protocols for a safe return to school. Those should be coming in the next week, and they're hoping to get everything back mid-July so that it really can impact both the district, on the district level, as well as the state level. Mark, did you want to add anything to that?
Um, Barb, I just have a couple of things at the end, so I'll hold. You keep going, just a couple of points.
Alright. We're going to start a library pilot program for four weeks. We're going to open up the library from three to five. They'll come in the main door by the library and then go in that very first side door, so they won't be actually entering the building. They'll come in the side door by those small steps, and there'll be sanitizer, masks. Social distancing will be in place. Parents have to sign up ahead of time, and we're limiting it to six for every twenty minutes.
Barb, who's going to work the library? Is that going to be Siobhan?
Julie Fulton Kelly.
Great.
Yep, and then, um, return books, of course, will be quarantined for a minimum of three days before being touched. So, we're hoping to get a, you know, a good, get a sense too on how kids are wearing masks, and, you know, how, how people are feeling. And also, it is in line with Monday being the Jessup Day that's closed. So we're trying to work in conjunction with that. For academic updates, you've got the summer school options. We had the E S Y, which is the special ed programming. Currently, we have twenty-five students enrolled. Title One, R T I, which was combination of teacher recommended and parent request, is thirty-four students. And then Summer Enrichment Activity, which was the district offerings. We have thirty-four students from C E S signed up, and just for perspective, sixty-five students across the district are participating. District's doing a kindergarten think tank, looking into the pros and cons of the following. So this is again getting ready for next fall with kindergarten. So if K is in person daily but with restrictions, what's it going to look like? If K were to start in January, what would support for home look like? And if K were to be on a hybrid schedule, half the group come each day or half, each half-day, what would that look like? And then finally, if K were to be remote all year? So that just started Tuesday. They had their first meeting, so I don't have the minutes from that, but I can get ahold of them. Extracurricular updates, main department of ed and Bunkie Dow are keeping us well informed with any changes or new protocols for the fall season. And Brian Deon is your athletic director, which I'm thrilled about. I think he'll make a great athletic director. Professional development, the district and school have instructional grants. Connor's Emerson Grant has seventeen staff members, including classroom teachers and specialists and support staff, focusing on building an anti-bias, anti-racist curriculum. And basically, they're going to be first starting to examine their own individual biases as educators before examining greater policies, et cetera. And you'll see more information on that. I don't, I won't read it to you. We do have extra books on how to be an anti-racist. I did order some. I know that they'll probably be gone before I get back up there tomorrow, but if any of the school board members wishes to read the book, I know it's hard to get ahold of. We'll be cycling them through, so just let me know if you'd like a copy. District grants, fifteen teachers in addition to the seventeen that are working through the school will participate in district grants. Again, some of the work is on the anti-bias, anti-racist work, but also continued professional development in the areas of reading, writing, and math, particularly around the workshop model. We continue to update the community resources webpage. Building and maintenance, the maintenance staff is working with the teaching staff on, of all things, decluttering rooms. Anything that is permeable needs to be bagged or stored someplace else. Those would be things like the futon couches, throw rugs, cushions, pillows, et cetera. And again, the department of ed is in the process of developing protocols to help schools get ready for the return. Food service, the backpack program continues with delivery to school on Wednesdays. Open table and common good continue to offer meals for families in need. Bar Harbor Food Pantry is maintaining their current hours of operation. And for technology, we've collected most, all of our pieces, our devices, and in some cases have actually redistributed them for summer school. And then, our big push right now is getting the devices ready for the fall, whether it be remote or whether it be in-person. And K4 will be having a CSAR application, which will make the remote learning and in-person learning a little bit more manageable. More user-friendly application, and grades five through eight will continue with Google Classroom. And we're also going to pilot Satori, which can be used for creating visual learning maps. If anyone has students in the high school, you may know about these visual learning maps, which, which is basically what you would think. It's a map that identifies the standards and the curriculum that goes with it, and, and what, you know, steps need to be really solid before moving to the next, next line. And let's see, I think that's it. It's a lot.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Kristy, a couple of quick things if I can add?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'm not sure if the, if the communication has come out because we've been working fast and furious, but I'm really pleased to, to announce that we're very close to being able to fund the social and emotional support piece for our students. There's a bunch of pieces that, that had to come together, and Barb was, was part of a group that, that worked to do that, the entire administrative team. But in short, the position that we had asked the A O S to fund, that we took out of the budget through some grants and some other funding that we're able to piece together that will not impact local budgets, we're confident we're going to be able to fund that. So that's exciting news. And I think now more than ever, with the things that we're learning about our kids and the, the resources and, and that they need, and the feedback parents are giving us, this is going to be a really important piece to, to have for, including in our safe return to school. Barb did a great job giving an overview of the safe return to school. There's over thirty people working very, very hard, and time is not our friend right now because information changes daily, but I, I will have a more detailed update at the A O S meeting on Monday on that. But I wanted the board to know that I think the good thing about having meetings through the summers so that you can ask questions and know what information is available, but we're, we're going to branch out. We've already established that we're, we're going to need building-based teams, so the principals know that, and they'll be working to establish that. And the last thing I have is I just want to give a shout out to Barb and Nancy and, and Cornell, and everybody behind the scenes that worked to hold the Bar Harbor Town Meeting. I'm really pleased that we were able to pull that off, and I'm, I'm really pleased that it can serve as a template for other communities. If they'd like to use that model, it was, it was successful, and I think participatory, it was unique, but it went well. And I thank everybody that, that went to hand in, in making that happen, so thank you.
And I, I wanted to say thanks to Barb and Heather too. I, Adam's doing, I don't know if any of your other kids, but Adam's doing some of that summer enrichment program. And I went to Heather's to pick up an iPad for him, and her front porch is this amazing collection of computers and information packets and all the stuff that the kids needed. Sorry, that's my answering machine. Somebody canceling their reservation as we speak. But I just want to say thank you for, to you and, and everybody who helped you, because that was a huge pile of work putting all that stuff together, and it's pretty exciting that we're offering this summer programming.
Yeah, Heather's done a great job with that, and, and Chrissy too, but it's, it's really making a difference for some of our kids.
I mean, the technology training post?
Yes. I have a question, Mark, for this position, the, the social emotional support, is that just going to be funded for one year, the way it's being funded right now, and then it will go?
Actually, thank you for, no, that's a great question, Kristy. Where, the, the resources that we put in place, we're asking for two-year commitment. Because we know the times that we're in are unique. They're going to be challenging for everyone. We want to have some sustainability, but, but our goal is to bring that back to the A O S budget, but we're looking at this as a, as a two-year pilot.
Cool. Does anybody, Marie?
I had a comment and then two questions, and I wrote them down, so I wouldn't forget. First of all, I was really, thank you so much for organizing the library pilot pickup, because I know that I've, I, I thought I had enough books for my kid for the summer, and before the school year even ended, they already had read all of them. So, thank you for, and, um, Siobhan has, that was including the ones, extra ones, the box that was this big that I picked up from Siobhan, so thanks for doing that. And then also, for any folks that are like rising, that have eighth grader like me that are rising, Anna Houston asked me to reach out to Siobhan Pappas, and I also met with her, and she was a great resource, and she's already given L like a second chunk of books that L can use, and has directed her to use the online catalog at the high school. So, thank you so much for doing that, because I would go broke if I had to, well, they would just wouldn't get books, because you can't afford to buy twenty-five dollars worth of books a month, so I just want to add to that. Thank you guys for working on that. It's really important.
Siobhan was the one who really pulled that all together, so I will let her know.
Yeah, please do. I mean, I think they're in person, but it's, it's super, it's really important, especially because we can't get the, we, we live on the interlibrary loans from the Jessup, and we can't do that anymore. My kids have read everything at the Jessup, so it's a, it's very much appreciated. Thank you for that. For that, so I have two quick questions. One is, when you're talking about the M D E O E survey that's coming out, are you talking about the one that's out now?
Yeah, it was supposed to come out today.
Okay, yes, out. So how is that, so my two questions are, how is that going to be distributed to parents and teachers? And my other one is, what are the other think tanks, other than the K2, that are district-wide that are happening? And, yeah, and who's in charge of those?
You know, I was going to throw in with Marie, I, I tried to do the survey today, and I felt unable to answer most of the questions, because I'm not part of the going back to school, and so I don't know if we need more information to come out before people can answer that. I don't know. You can, I just thought I'd throw that out there while you're answering that.
Mark, I don't know much about the M D O E survey, other than what I've been reading. Do you have any firsthand information?
What, um, no, I, I don't have additional information, but what I can do, it, it strikes me that rather than Barb or all, all the principals doing their own release, I could do a, a school messenger release with a link and some explanatory piece. So, I can, I can take that for action, and that came out today, and I'll do some, some research on that. So, if, if it makes more sense for it to come out through my office, I'm happy to do it, but it, I don't know. Barb, do, do you, do you, maybe we can talk behind the scenes?
Yeah, we can do that for sure. And then the second question, it's actually just the kindergarten that is in the process of doing the think tank with Julie. And I believe all of the other, a lot of the other information is going to be coming out through the subgroups that are working with the safe return to schools. I'm, I'm not on the curriculum academic part of it. I'm on the food service and transportation, so I can get it.
I am, I am. I'm just questioning whether or not it may, whether, why it doesn't make sense that there are building or grade or however, however you're devising up the K2, like, for beyond them, starting now. Just because by the time those recommendations come out, and they are passed or not passed or whatever, it's going to be August. So those teachers that are working on the K2 think take are rightfully, perfectly, fantastically going to be like heads and shoulders above in terms of being able to work with their own colleagues and come up with a really succinct, succinct plan and flexible plan. So, I, I, again, I don't know who's organizing that, but if the person who's organizing it would consider pushing for organization for other grade clusters, I think that makes a lot of sense.
I, I think some of the teachers are already starting to do that in an informal way, and I think in some ways they're looking for some guidance from the state, which we were thinking we were getting, but we will definitely, we will definitely get more information to you.
Maria, I just want to chime in and say that all options are on the table, and we're not going to close our, our eyes or ears to any options that are going to work for kids. And that, that means within grade levels, within schools. I, I will say, I think it's important for folks to know that we closed schools universally as a district. The reopening can look, and might look, and may look different. And, and so, I just want people to know that the information is, is, it's fluid, but all options are on the table, and we're open to all of that.
Yeah, and I, I love that the K2 cluster is happening. I hope that there's more of those clusters happening, and I think that makes a lot of sense. I don't know if anybody else agrees with me, or I'll just keep saying the same thing over and over again, but, so I just want to make sure, putting in a plug for that.
And Maria, I just need to be really clear. It's kind, it's the incoming kindergarten only that they're looking.
I thought it said K2 on the thing.
No, yeah.
Mark, can you, I mean, this might be an A O S question too, but just for me, because I'm not on the committee. I mean, what is, what is the committee, this, I know you're, the committee was back to school, but then now the reports are coming out that the guidance is, we're waiting on guidance from the state. So, whose guidance are we using, or who's making the decisions?
So, I think you're referencing some of the articles, Kristy, I may have supplied, that said the state's making the decision. Those are, are media reports, as far as I can tell from my conversations with the commissioner of education, Hancock County Superintendents, that the decisions are going to be made locally with guidance from the state. But those decisions will be local, and I cannot find anybody that contradicts that. Main School Management, Main School Superintendent Association, and, so there were some reports, and I think it's just how people are, are kind of viewing the guidance, and that, unless I'm told otherwise, is how we're planning. And, and my, my thought process is to continue to work with the, the groups that have been assembled, and any folks that have been called in to support those groups, and then assemble our best thoughts at the end of the month, bring that back to the administrative team for review, and bring that to the A O S board for review and a recommendation. I want to believe that, that we're going to be on track in early August, but there's, dependent upon what the data shows, you know, we, we may have to consider a lot of possibilities. But that's still the, the thought process, and, and just in short, to answer your question, I believe it's a local decision.
So going back to like this, this, um, the, the survey, and I answered the, the school board survey, and I don't know if that's different than what the parent survey looks like, but the questions are, my school has a policy in place for disinfecting and cleaning. My school has a policy for mask-wearing. My school has a policy for teaching with social distancing. I mean, and obviously, we don't. That's what these groups are working on. And so like, I found like it premature to send out this, this, I don't, I don't know what, I don't know. Did anybody answer the parent version of the, it felt like all the answers are, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. And so I don't know what they're going to get, what, what information they're going to gain from that yet.
And I, I also want to be careful with the word policy. We use the word policy as board-approved policy. Some people, some individuals, some organizations think policies, they interchange those with procedures. Do we have procedures in place? Yes, we do. But we need to work with staff, with students and parents before we consider bringing people back in terms of what those procedures might be, and do they ultimately become policies? I'm not aware of any schools that have those specific policies, because unless they were prepared, prepared for COVID, I can't see it.
Right.
I took, I took one of the parent ones, and it was, it wasn't like that. It was more like about your feelings about things.
Right, so that's totally different than like the school board administrator one, which makes more sense, yeah. Okay.
Okay, Barb, I see the thing about it being kindergarten now. Sorry.
Okay. Kristy, did you, um, the Bar Harbor Teachers Association sent a letter for public comment, but it didn't make it on the agenda, so I just didn't know what you wanted to do.
The A O S board, Barb.
Okay, so they're going to do it at the A O S board?
It's going to be read at the A O S board meeting.
Barb, it was addressed to the A O S board, but if you want to include that in the minutes, or Kristy wants to read it, you know, that, that's fine.
I'll, I'll just include it in public comment, and have the, the board, have all board members.
We're losing you, Barb.
I lost you.
Uh-oh. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, have other board members seen the Bar Harbor Teachers Association public comment?
I think I sent it out, right?
Okay.
Yes, thank you for sending it.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and so I, I did, before you joined us, Barb, I, I asked Mark if we should include it, and it does specifically discuss, you know, to be read at the next board meeting, the A O S level, so we could hold off. And I think, Mark.
Does it hurt to read it now? I mean, I don't know.
No, I can.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying, I, I.
Doesn't hurt. I mean, if the board were like, reading it to the record, no one, no one gets hurt.
Yeah.
Let me read it. I'll read it during the public, the next public comment.
Okay.
Yeah.
And June eighteenth was your last voucher. Which ended the fiscal year, basically, is what it was doing.
How, how did the return, I know we, we emailed that, like, people had to return to work, some employees had to return to work as of July first. How is that going for people? Like the secretaries and bookkeepers, are everybody feeling comfortable, or?
Well, I start first, and then Barb can chime in, but overall, from the district, my understanding is that's pretty much been the norm throughout the district, that people have with safeguards, with P P E, with protocols, have returned to work. And I'm not aware of, of any instances where that's impacted anyone adversely. Barb, you can speak specifically to your building.
Yeah, no, we've had, we've had people, and, and nobody's feeling uncomfortable at this point, so. Everyone's still following the protocols. Teachers who need to get in the building are emailing me still first, which is great. You know, but everybody's signing in, following the protocols, et cetera.
So is there any more updates to the superintendent's safe return to school group, or did we cover?
No, the, the only thing I'd say, Kristy, is that, you know, we're, we're going to continue to operate as, as best we can to determine when it's safe for kids and staff to return. And when we have kids returning, obviously, our expectation is for us to return, and, and we're going to work through that universally. And thi- this work is fluid. And I'm just seeing a number of people we have on to, to try to determine it. Dwayne is, is one of those individuals. Dwayne, doing that work at the hospital is a great resource for us. So, we're not operating in a vacuum. We're, we're networking with the lab, we're, we're networking with a lot of people. So, I just want the teachers, the staff, the parents, the students to know, our goal is to bring everybody back safely. And we're going to do that to the best of our ability. And, and I think, you know, again, being fluid and being flexible is just where we just need to be right now. Thank you.
The only, the only update I had as a, as a board chair is just to remind you all that tomorrow night, even though this is not necessarily Bar Harbor Board, there's the high school budget meeting at the high school at six P M. It's a drive-up vote on, and anybody out there listening, that they know that it's a drive-up vote, like the town meeting to vote on the high school budget. So, hopefully, see everybody there. Alright, so I will, so, any other comments? Lili, I think you're muted.
Yeah, I just have a question, and I don't know if this is even an appropriate question, but I've been thinking a lot about, in the event that we do go back to school inside the building, if we have staff or faculty or administrators who are not comfortable coming back to work, do we have a, like a protocol, or like, can we, are you thinking about that?
Oh, yes.
Do we have support systems for those people? It's just, it's been on my mind a lot, so I just wanted to ask you.
It's on my mind every day too, Lili, and, and the answer to that question is, at, at this time, the guidelines are falling. We're, we're trying, obviously, there's, there's a number of factors that play into it. Number one, we look at our collective bargaining agreement and make sure we're aligned with that. We also certainly make sure we're aligned with state and federal laws. And then we want to look at, we want to look at the health and the safety guidelines that we have. But the information we have right now is that aligned with public businesses and other places, whether they be private, public, whether it be Acadian National Park, whether it be, a number of entities have deemed it safe to return. So those are the guidelines we've used for our year-round support staff, and we have not had any issues with that. To date, I've had one teacher, unsolicited, and it's not a Bar Harbor teacher, request a one-year leave of absence. That's allowed through the contract, and I'm going to support that. And, and their reasons stated were in relation to a COVID piece for their family. And the contract allows for that unpaid leave of absence that they've requested, so that's one way to navigate that. I can envision there's multiple scenarios out there that, and some I can't even comprehend. But at this time, what I would say to that is that if we deem it safe for students to return, we would deem it safe for staff, including teachers and administrators and ed techs and others to return. And those, I think, are the expectations we'll employ. And we'll do that with the committee, and I would say we have association representatives, teacher representatives, support staff, so we are not doing this in a vacuum, and we want to make sure people are heard, that the concerns that are voiced by both association members, staff, all of these things are taken in. that the concerns that are voiced by both association members, staff, all of these things are taken into account. I hope, I hope that addresses.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, you know, just thinking about, so we, I, I understand de- deeming it safe. I mean, I've been working and I deem my business safe, but, um, are, are there, is it going to be possible for students who maybe just discovered that this distance learning is really ideal for them? And they don't necessarily feel comfortable being within the walls of the school? Is, is that an option for students to keep doing what?
I think it's safe to say, Lili, all options are on the table right now. And I will say a couple of things that not everything through COVID has been negative. There are some things that we can take away that may be positive that we need to weave into our teaching and learning. Hopefully, we'll never see another snow day, might be one example. But, but remote, remote learning, there are some positives and there are some takeaways. Um, you know, I, 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 this is moving so quickly that I want to, um, you can tell I'm being very careful with my work. Because, and that's intentional, because I don't want to say anything that's going to cause people to be more uncomfortable. I, I think my eyes and ears are open. And we're going to continue to work with our team and ultimately bring things to the board. We're going to work with our associations. We see this as a collaborative process. First and foremost, we're an educational entity. We need to have, make sure kids are educated, but we will not compromise safety.
I think I'm just, I'm having a hard time because we're not getting together and we have one meeting a month. And I'm not really having conversations, you know, with people about what's going on. And so I'm, a lot of what I think about is just what I think about. So it's not, I'm not trying to open any cans of worms or anything. I'm just trying to understand what's been happening in places that I'm not in, you know, I'm not in other meetings and, and hearing what people are talking about, so.
I'm actually glad that you asked the question because these are the questions I get when people see me at the market or, you know, getting gas or prescriptions and, and I try to be honest with them. And I think that, uh, the board may want to consider a workshop or anytime you want to meet more often, we can do that. Um, I, I, I wish there were a way for me to, to forecast, you know, the next six weeks, but it's, it's very, very difficult. But I will say to your point about what's best for kids, we're going to keep all options on the table. And I think there's, there's most definitely have to be some supports and resources for students that might have experienced some positives as well as staff. I just don't know what that looks like yet. Um, the last thing I'll say is I hope that our school committee members consider and our staff consider and our parents consider that maybe if time isn't our friend right now, looking at our school calendar might help us with some professional development and shifting some things so that we keep this energy going and that we, we come together in a way that's going to be best for our kids and best for our teachers and everybody involved. Um, I'm committed to that work. Thank you.
Oh, hold on, Marie. I will add too, Lili, that I think that we had a, a board chair meeting last week where we discussed how important it is for us to get back to face-to-face meetings as soon as we can because discussion is hard and decision-making is hard over Zoom. And I, I, I believe Todd was pushing for, you know, like the July 7th meeting if possible. And I, I don't know if that is, but, um, and, and another board chair, you know, put in a request for a board workshop, um, a face-to-face board workshop sooner than later so that we could, there's a lot of stuff on the table to be talked about, um, that we're just not really having the right, the right situation to be able to talk about those things right now. So I, I do think it's in the works to figure out face-to-face meetings as soon as we can.
We are planning on, on holding our, um, and it's, we are planning on holding our, our meetings in person and on, and remotely, um, sometime in late July, early August. That is our plan.
Can you go, I'm, I'm coming back to you, Marie. Can I go back to that question about the year's leave of absence, Mark? Do we know what happens with teacher insurance if they take a year's unpaid leave? Would they have to pay for their own insurance to continue it for that year?
Well, uh, I mean, the, the short answer is if it's an unpaid leave of absence, it would be applicable to both salaries and benefits. I believe there's a transitional period, there may be a, a Cobra piece in there, but, uh, I could talk to Nancy and get, get the specifics. But unpaid would be salary and benefits. But certainly they would have the ability to continue their plan or program should they choose. The other thing I would say too is that the school committees, um, and the, and the communities have supported our teachers and staff since we've left, uh, March 13th and up to date, and that is commendable. But as we all know, everybody, um, our budgets are fixed. And moving forward, we're not going to be able to sustain the ability to, if, if, if the expectation is students need to be physically present and staff need to be able to support those students. I can't imagine a scenario where we can, we can have a system where it's going to be remote for staff and physical for students and sustain that within the budget. So that's a difficult piece. And, um, that's one of the reasons that with school year support staff, we've had the expectation of returning and so far to date, that's worked. But again, I want to emphasize, we're not going to be bringing any recommendations forward unless we deem it safe for students and staff.
Marie, do you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, um, I know they take, I know they take precious time, but I've appreciated when Mark has done the, um, the like Chris Popper talking interviews. Because I think what Lili's like hit the nail on the head is that, um, there's, we get information out to folks and, and I know it's up to them to have the responsibility to find it. But the more palatable and easy it is, like when it's like listening to Mark speak and answer that question, I'm hoping that at least 100 people are like watching our broadcast right now. I'm certain that's not the case. But, um, the questions that he answered and the questions that Lili asked and the scenarios that she's talking about are very much on the forefront of all, everyone's minds. And it's really, it's really hard to get, um, um, it's hard to, I, I get that we, we don't, we don't want to say too much because we don't really know too much because we're still working on this stuff and we have so many people involved in it that are, we're, we're pinging their expertise weekly, if not daily. But at the same time, it's helpful to give pieces of nuggets of information, very specific information based on these kinds of questions, just like Lili said. I don't want to burden, um, administration anymore, you know, with, with sort of a PR, with these PR things. But I would say they're really essential. Um, and I can give you at least a couple of examples. I know Kristi and I have been online and people have asked a question and we're both like, oh, Dr. Gauss just did a thing with Chris Popper on this exact question and we just shared it. Oh, he just did one on, so I don't know. I mean, I've always joked that I think we need our own little like marketing firm for like the work that we do as volunteers for the school board, not to pat ourselves on the back, just to have one more avenue to get like the information out about the things we're thinking about and that we're grappling with. Um, and I don't know what that looks like, but I would just say more opportunities you have, Mark or Barb, that, that aren't going to be like super stressful to, um, to get those real detailed, like what about this? What are you thinking about this? And answer that like a human being, face to, face to camera. I think those are really how we get, um, the complexities. People just want to know that we're thinking just like them. Like, they just want to know that we're like, oh, I'm totally thinking the same thing and here's what we've talked about. That's all they want to know. And then they're like, oh, great, I, I had a feeling you were thinking about that, but I, I just wasn't sure.
So if I, if I start to do a weekly update, will the school committee and Barb and Heather and anybody else, please promise me if I'm over-communicating to please stop?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to direct you to do anything, but I don't think you can over-communicate in our district. I'm just saying, I, I mean, maybe I'm, I'm just like in la-la land right now, but I mean, I am an information person.
I'm happy to do that. I just don't want to overburden people.
I just think people have questions and they're all the same. And we don't have answers, but it's important to say that.
Okay. No, and I agree. And I think, I think sometimes we just need to be short and, and sweet and succinct. And I don't know if there's a way to set up like a web, website where people can dump their questions in and we can just, you know, keep answering them. Um, but we can talk about that with Josh, maybe Heather and I.
Barb, let's bring that back to the A team because I, that's a common theme I hear from other boards too and, and a way.
And we talked about it, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, and we had talked about different ways we might be able to, so.
That's great feedback. Thank you, Marie. I appreciate it because I'm always sensitive to putting out a communication that doesn't have substance and over-communicating, but if people, you know, I, I'm sure people will, I just want to make sure that when I do put things out, people do pay attention and listen to it. So, thank you.
Yep.
I also think more, every time you have an opportunity to remind people to sign up for like the, the email blast or the, or the texting messages, because people will say, well, I never get a text. Well, you have to, you have to sign yourself up. They don't automatically text you. And I think, you know, when some of us have been in the school for a while, then you know to do that stuff. And sometimes new parents are, are so overwhelmed that maybe they just frequent opportunities when we have all the parents together to say, hey, remember you can sign up for your teacher's classroom. You can sign up for texting, so.
Yes.
Anything else on those updates? Anybody, anybody? No. All right, so if you want, I will read this letter from, um, the AOS. So it's to the Bar Harbor School Committee President, Kristi Loquadro, AOS 91 Board Chair Heather Jones, members of the AOS 91 Board, AOS 91 Superintendent Dr. Mark Gauss and AOS 91 Director of Curriculum Assessment and Instruction, Dr. Julie Melzer. We, the Bar Harbor Teachers Association, thank you for your recent statement condemning racism. We agree that our district has a responsibility to devote time and resources to combat racism in our schools and in our community. As teachers, we need to take stock and examine our own biases, recognize past mistakes and take ownership and responsibility. We are each committed to making our classrooms and our schools more inclusive and equitable, but for systematic change to occur, we need to work collectively. We are asking you, the AOS 91 Board and MDI RSS Administration, to commit to action steps. We endorse the demands outlined in the MDI Racial Justice Collective petition, all of which can be addressed by establishing an anti-racism task force. This task force should examine curriculum, policy and practices as well as steer mandatory anti-racist training and professional development. In addition to a district-level task force, it would behoove our district to further this work by implementing a racial justice group with representation from every grade span and/or department in each of our MDI RSS schools, all of which have unique needs and compositions. We are inspired by the candor and introspection of district leaders and school boards across our state who have acknowledged their own shortcomings and the inequity in their institutions. We offer these examples and ask you to consider taking similar actions. Xavier Batana, Superintendent of Portland Public Schools, outlined many actions he is taking in his June 16th, 2020 column, and there's a link to that here. This work includes partnering with his district's equity leaders cohort, sorry, to address curriculum and using district data to examine the achievement gap, the enrollment in advanced course offerings and discrepancies in the frequency and severity of discipline between white students and students of color. He is also taking part in a year-long Race in America class with his school board. Jeffrey J. Porter, Superintendent of MSAD Number 51, stated in a June 3rd, 2020 open letter, quote, "I firmly believe that a school community in the year 2020 has a moral imperative to educate on the topic of race or else do its students a great disservice, not just in the civic arena, but in the global one-two. Our world is too interconnected now to permit our students to graduate without understanding the complexities of race, its history and its continued struggles. To do any less would be negligent for an educational institution that seeks to engage, empower and inspire." End quote. His district's Equity Steering Committee has partnered with Community Change Incorporated to address racism and white privilege. Bangor School Department Superintendent Betsy Webb has arranged for an outside investigation of racist policies and practices at the predominantly white Bangor High School in response to the story cited in the June 23rd, 2020 Bangor Daily News article, Racism is My High School Experience. In this vein, we, the Bar Harbor Teachers Association, support the MDI Racial Justice Collective's demands. We hope that by establishing a district-level anti-racism task force and school-based racial justice groups, AOS 91 can take action steps to examine racism and white privilege in our schools alongside the other main districts outlined above. We recognize that change is needed and must be a focus for all of us individually and collectively. While we appreciate the work that has been done thus far, which is outlined in Julie Melzer's document, Diversity, Inclusion, Social Justice and Anti-Bias Anti-Racism Education, MDI RSS Schools, which is linked here, we feel our work is only beginning. In fact, while we all consider ourselves progressive and over-minded, we are learning that such a mentality may actually be counterproductive when trying to affect change. In closing, we offer this quotation from White Fragility by Robin DiAngelo as an acknowledgement of our role as well-intentioned majority white staff, as a, sorry, let me say that again. In closing, we offer this quotation from White Fragility by Robin DiAngelo as an acknowledgement of our role as a well-intentioned majority white staff administration and board and as a call to action. Quote, "I define a white progressive as any white person who thinks he or she is not racist or is less racist or in the choir or already gets it. White progressives can be the most difficult for people of color because to the degree that we think we have arrived, we will put our energy into making sure that others see us as having arrived. None of our energy will go into what we need to be doing for the rest of our lives, engaging in ongoing self-awareness, continuing education, relationship building and actual anti-racist practice." End quote. Sincerely, the Bar Harbor Teachers Association, Brian Boardman, Co-President, Amanda Dyer, Co-President. And I'm, I'm guessing that will be either read in, at the AOS level as well.
Um, that's my understanding, Kristi, but I know that, that Heather's working on how to navigate the, this. What I do know and what I can say is that the public comment we received to date for the AOS is going to be provided to the board in advance, along with the student petition and along with the recommendation for the creation of the task force. So there'll be a, a lot of information that will be avai- available to the board. Um, and I know there are plans to also reach out to that group in advance and place that information on our website prior to the board meeting too. So, um, those are the things I know as of this time.
Are there any discussion? There are no discussion items for today's meeting or nothing in advance. Um, action items, we have a nomination of, um, I don't, I don't say her name wrong, Emily.
Emily Rezeki and.
Or math teacher?
Yes, and, um, I'm really pleased to nominate Emily and I'm sure Barb is equally pleased, but Matt Haney looked very displeased. We, we, Emily, um, is a phenomenal math teacher. Uh, she's somebody I've, I've, uh, I actually hired to come to MDI High School and has been doing a wonderful job. But she is our nominee for the Connors Emerson position, replacing Ben Mako. And, um, I, I don't have enough positives to say about Emily other than I'm disappointed we have to fill a position at the high school. However, our students at Connors Emerson will benefit should the board approve this nomination.
Now, you got a most, Marie?
Uh, she's only, um, first of all, super sad to say goodbye to Ben, but I, I know that a lot, uh, one of the great things about our district is that even though our school lost someone, it went to somebody else and so it's a good thing. At least he didn't like go to, you know, Idaho or something like that, would never see him again. Um, but I was interested and I, I understand that she's only been at the high school for two years and had taught, um, higher grades before that. Why the successive bump down to middle school and after two years?
Okay, so let me first start by saying, um, she did her, um, student teaching. She, she went into education sort of as a second career. And, um, she did her student teaching in middle school and loved it. And we had actually offered her the position of the sixth grade, um, year-long position uh, when Christina Nicholson took her, her leave. But then the high school's position came up, um, and it was a full-time position. So she, she ended up taking the full-time position. So, um, I, and in talking to Julie Koblinsky and others, they just, it, there's nobody that has had anything negative to say and feel that she, just her energy, her enthusiasm, um, the way she relates to kids is, is, I don't know if that answers your question.
Yes, it does, thank you.
Yeah, Marie, there, there, um, I mean, she's done an exemplary job and I think Barb is, is dead on. I think that's probably where her passion lies. I think that's probably where her passion lies. And it was just a more of a secure position, but we'd be thrilled to retain her at the high school.
And so I, I think this doesn't need to be said, but I'll say she, she starts with us back at year one probationary teacher.
Yes, and Emily understands that. And I mean, I, I'm very clear with people, if they move within our district, that, that occurs and I hope someday to be able to address that.
Okay, so I feel like I should know this answer, but is the reason that that happens? Because it seems like this year, a lot of the moving around is happening and it kind of makes me sad for some people that have worked so hard to have to start all over again. Is that a part of the negotiated contract thing or is that?
That's all individual employees.
It's because we're an AOS and, and I'm a superintendent that reports to 11 different boards and each board approves their own teachers. And it's, it's a function of who we are, similar to the 11 budgets that we have to pass. And we've made, I mean, it's a great question because before we aligned our policies and before we aligned our calendar, we would do this 11 times. And so I would say, at the end of the day, I hope we can get to a place where our teachers, who are very successful, do not have to go back to probationary status. But it is a function of you approving as the Bar Harbor School Committee a contract. And, and they don't lose salary or steps, but they have to go back to that, to that probationary status. And that's unfortunate.
And now, sorry, is it, is it a function of like, I know when we, when I first joined the board, we became, we all got together or all of the different boards got together and joined together for health insurance. And we, you know, if, is it, if we do too many, too much joining, does that, then we're not an AOS? Is that how it works or are there certain things we're allowed to do?
I, I think there are a lot of things that we're allowed to do and I hope that this is a, this is a conduit for our teachers. We have a negotiation session coming up. I, you know, I hope there are a lot of things we can work collaboratively on to make sure that it's, it's beneficial to our teachers and our students. And I, I think that that's something that we can discuss. There are many, many things that, you know, I'm starting to realize lately that if we, if, if we can't find a way to better consolidate our options, how, what things can we find that we can do that, that people are comfortable with? And, and this is an example of one of those. And I'm very open to that and I see it as an opportunity that's good for teachers and good for kids.
So when, when and where is the appropriate place to discuss this? And if this, if it is in the discussion items, I'd like to bring it up for discussion sometime in the next several meetings. Or I, I don't know where the right time or who the right people are to be having this discussion, but I.
Remember back when we had the board chair several years ago, Lili, we discussed hiring teachers, support staff, and custodial staff as year-round district-wide employees versus individual employees. But I think it would be something that we'd also, we'd have to propose it and discuss it and then have to negotiate it as part of the contract.
Yep. Oh, okay. So, well, I mean, we, this board can't decide for all of the boards, right? It has to be a discussion that every board, whether they want to do, like, have this be something that would, I don't know, it's just hard sitting in my chair, seeing teachers have to go. You know, I understand the salary piece, but to me, that's not all of why people work. You know, they, there's a lot of pride in the work that they've done and how far they've come. And, and even if it is just a, you know, not, it doesn't say anything about their teaching abilities or whatever to put them back on a probationary thing, but, but to me, that's kind of an emotional heavy hit and I would just like to have that discussion. And maybe I'm wrong, I'm not a teacher, I don't experience it, but it just doesn't look and feel good to me.
It's, it's also an efficiency issue for, if we have somebody, a very accomplished teacher that has been on continuing contract in a, I mean, we talk about resources to support probationary status. I mean, I think this is something that we can universally agree on and I hope we can, we can find, we can collaborate to move forward. I, I, I see this as a positive, Lili.
Okay, thank you.
Would anybody like to make a motion to, for Emily?
I'll move to approve Emily to the middle school math teacher.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion about this? All right, we'll call your names for a vote. Lili.
I approve.
Duane.
Approve.
Marie.
Approve.
Robin too.
Approve.
And I approve as well, so that is unanimous. Welcome to Emily. And sorry to Ben, we're sorry to see Ben Mako go. Adam was all ready to fill his life full of puns and now.
I was devastated.
You know, again, Emily, Emily is coming from the high school. Ben's not going to be far. So your son can be in touch with him, right down the road in Mount Desert.
And I don't think there's any more public comment out there, right?
I don't think there's any aware of.
Is there any other business? I just wanted to say, Mark, and I guess this is an AOS issue too, but I appreciate your statement and the creation of the anti-racism task force because this is an issue that has clearly risen to the, to the top as, as something that's really important to our communities. So thank you for addressing it and I look forward to where we go in the future.
Well, Kristi, if I may, thank you, that's very kind, but let me, let me be really clear. We wouldn't be where we are right now if it wasn't for the students and if it wasn't for the staff. So I, I, I don't want anybody to underestimate the power or the capacity of why we are where we are. It's because of student voice and staff voice. And that quote that you read at the end of the public comment is something that I've been looking at over the past few days because it really, it really has codified where I'm at in my life with white privilege. So I appreciate your comment, but I want you to know, I'm committed to the work, but it's because of the advocacy of the students and the staff. It's just that it's, it's been really difficult to process that along with the safe return to school work. They're both important, but if it wasn't for the kids and the staff, we wouldn't be where we are today. Thank you.
Lili.
I just want to say, I, I do think it's really great that the students have really been using their voices. One of my personal silver linings of this whole COVID thing is that all my children are here for the summer and it has sparked a lot of conversation. And I have to say, I'm really sad to say that this has been an issue for, my oldest son graduated like 10 years ago. And I was appalled at the dinner table conversations that we've had of things that have been happening in our schools that are not brought to the forefront and that have been kind of passed over or shut the door or whatever. So I'm, I commend the students for doing this hard work, to push us to do this hard work that is just, I'm really sorry that we, we haven't done this before. So whoever's out there listening, I apologize.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's tough hearing it, but we can really be proud of the kids who are stepping up and, and having their voice heard. And I think I'm really proud of the, of the Connors Emerson staff to have 17 that are so passionate about really exploring their own beliefs and biases as they head into this work. I think it's going to be really, really changing and monumental for us as a staff. Two things, Kristi, I wanted to just mention. David Tomlinson is our new custodian replacing Steve Strout and David actually worked with us 20 years ago and has strong custodial background in, from the Scarborough School Systems. So we're delighted to have him back.
Barb, Barb also didn't want to tell you that, that also came from the high school recently, right?
Well, no, I wasn't going to say that. That's true. I forgot about that. I conveniently forgot about that. And then the other thing is, you know, I want to really send a shout out to Heather because the eighth grade promotion ceremony, I thought was lovely and wonderful, but it really was Heather's baby and she did a great job in organizing and just making sure it was special for the kids.
Yay, Heather. We love you, Heather.
I didn't even cry.
Thank you, it was awesome.
Yeah, yeah.
I heard nothing but, but compliments constantly about that eighth grade promotion, so.
Yep, it was, it was a lot of fun.
And Heather, I'm proud you didn't do any karaoke. I'm very proud of you. I know you were tempted.
You didn't like my duet with Dan, little lover.
I did before, at the practice, but I was, you know, I had never know, you know, you might get a little bit spicy up there and start doing singing Journey.
No, that was totally spontaneous. I think it and I should take that on the road. We could win some competitions. If anybody has a birthday coming up, you need entertainment, give me holler.
It's Lili's birthday today.
Heather, sing a song.
Everybody's working for the weekend.
Yeah. Uh, any other, other business?
Nope. We had, we had talked about recommending a virtual presentation on the middle school option. I'm just not sure where that's gone. We had mentioned for the district level.
Well, I think we're voting next week, so.
I know, that's what I'm.
Are we the first? No, we're not the first to vote. We're the last to vote, aren't we?
On this particular issue, I don't think so. Isn't everybody doing it on the 14th?
Oh, so everybody's voting the same day?
I think. I could be wrong, but I don't believe it's. Yeah.
I, I don't know. I mean, I just keep talking about it every meeting, but asking if we're doing it, so. I guess we're not.
We have eight days. Who, I, I'm just, yeah, I'm not sure who to.
Well, I think I would, I asked if we could be brought up to Heather at the AOS. I don't know if that was or if she had an opinion about it or, I think at this point, it's kind of a moot point. I don't think it's fair. I don't know if I'd be able to gather those three people to do that or not, but.
I mean, I was, I was, the article in the paper by Dick did, did lay out the facts that, you know, what we're spending on and not spending on, so hopefully that, that people understand what they're voting on, you know, at this point.
Is there a one pager that could be at each of the town offices? You know, when people go in to vote in case people didn't read Dick's article and, and it was, you know, succinct or?
Um, well, there's a, a one-page frequently asked question and an executive summary about the report.
I wonder if we can get, use that.
Yeah, I mean, the language about the, I don't know what you want to call it for language, the explanatory language about what voting yes means versus what voting no means is attached. I don't know, maybe it's not. I haven't done my ballot yet. It was supposed to be attached to the bubbles that you fill in. So when you went to vote yes or no, you knew what a yes vote means.
But I can't remember, took that off. The Bar Harbor Council removed that text from.
Okay. I haven't opened my ballot yet, but I'm.
I think.
Happy to do what everybody, whoever ever get permission to do, so I don't know.
Mark, is this something you and I could talk about with the other principals or the?
Yes.
Managers?
Yes, and I would offer to, since March 13th, this has been an extraordinary time. So this, this question has not been at the forefront of many people's minds. It's an important question and there's no doubt we have to have a conversation with kids, with staff, and with community members following the straw poll and whatever the results are. Because I think we've learned some things through the remote learning and through this period. And regardless of what the information is on either side of the aisle, I think we need to revisit this conversation. And I do think it's important at some point that we have in-person forums. The school committee talked about the fact that meeting virtually is a challenge. I, I think that's true of this question as well. And I hope we can get back to the place where we can roundtable with kids, with staff, and with community members. I, I, you know, I just hearken back to the process it took to develop MDI High School. It was not easy and it shouldn't be. And I think this conversation needs to continue. It's very important for kids, but it's very important for our communities as well. So it's not lost on me that whatever the results are on either side, we've got to get back to some physical conversations.
I, I think what's difficult, and I might just go back to when we decided to put this question out, is we haven't really defined what the results of the straw poll. So if, if, oh, I mean, what they mean, like if, how many towns, how many, what the numbers mean, which I think is, is hard to know how to move. So the first thing we're going to have to do after the vote is figure out what do the numbers mean and are we moving forward? And how are we moving forward? So.
It was intended to be a guiding document and a guiding, a guidance for conversation at the AOS board. And, and I think that bears, again, going back to, there have been several board members that said they would like to have a workshop about safe return to schools. I think this can be, this is an equally important topic as well. So Kristi, we can bring that back to the board chair update and, and planning forward for August.
So do we want to try to have a one-page document at the, at the town halls?
Definitely, definitely. And we can do that.
Okay, Marie, who has the one-page?
We have a one-page frequently asked question. I can, I can work with you to put, pull something together from, from like two things that have already been written.
Okay. Okay, and then I will make contact with the town managers and just make sure people have access to it. Maybe they could even put it on their webpages. I don't know.
And I can work with Selena to make sure that we get that out universally across the AOS.
That'd be great.
I think, I think it's especially important right now because people are feeling nervous about their budgets and, you know, with, with the COVID-19, your, your first response would be like, no, I don't want to spend any more money. And they, it'd be clear that they understand that it's only a conversation. It's not, you know, breaking ground next month. And I think, I just got to keep giving information over and over again because everybody receives it at a different time.
Right, and in a different place.
Are there any future agenda items? Obviously, the middle school. And obviously, further down, you know, once we get the back to school, we're going to have to circle back to our school improvement goals, where we are with that. But I know that's kind of set aside for now.
Right.
So I did receive an email from a, from a town citizen today suggesting that I contact Brian Hubbell about, about how to use parking money to pay for the new school. And I said, I am way ahead of you. That email went out to Brian months ago. I'm on it. I'm not giving up, but I'm on it.
But you, you did notice, Kristi, on the town report, the, the featured photo was a parking meter.
Yes. Any other future agenda items anyone wants to throw on here? Obviously, return to school is what we all want to know about.
Yep.
Are we, and are we going to set the next meeting for the first, first Monday in August? Is there any reason, no reason to meet before then? We filled all our. We've filled all our positions, right Barb?
Where? At this point, we have, yes.
Thanks to the high school.
Well, I think, I think Barb may need to fill an ed tech, but that's all right.
Oh, yeah. I, I do, no, there's several ed texts that we're going to be needing to replace, but yeah.
That gate does swing both ways.
I know it does.
Okay. So what, what is that Monday? The third, August 3rd?
I think that it, let me look. Yes, August 3rd.
And should we be hopeful that maybe we could meet in person on August 3rd?
I'm up for it. If you are, we can do social distancing and we can provide, we can provide a venue where we can do social distancing. We'll just have to be cognizant of what the requirements are for the general public and providing a, a remote option if we're still in this mode, but we'll work towards that goal.
One thing that I've thought's been really positive and, and I, I'm not necessarily advocating that we want to be on TV all the time, like a town meeting, but since we've all gone remote, we've made this, you know, more teachers are watching the meetings, more townspeople who are concerned and I hate to see us go back to in-person meetings and, and lose the community involvement. So I don't, I don't know what I'm recommending really, but I just thought, I throw that out there. It has been nice that people have the option to attend these meetings and I know they're not, it's not like hundreds of people, but two or three.
I think what you're recommending is the possibility of live-stream meetings.
Yes, yes.
We can set, work towards that.
I agree.
That's a possibility.
I mean, we figured out all this other stuff, this, you know, how to do this, like, I think, I completely agree, I think we need to do it. I mean, not too many people watch, but it gives you the option to like watch it later, I think, which is really helpful. Like maybe people aren't sitting in front of their computer screen at the same time as us, but they're able to go back and, and look at the conversation and what was talked about, so I think that's very helpful.
At a minimum, if we can't livestream, we could certainly record and make it available to the public.
And I know just from my point of view, I, I, I go back and I watch lots of town meetings, like I'm not there public, live all the time, but if I need, if it's an important, if it's a situation that's important to me, then I'll go back and watch the comments and the conversation is helpful, so. All right, so would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Well, I just once-
Yep.
Wish Lili a happy birthday before.
Thank you so much.
I hope you're doing something to celebrate.
Yes, I, actually my daughter and her now fiance just got engaged on Saturday.
Oh, congratulations.
They are cooking some crazy delicious dinner. Dan is a chef, so I'm nice. Have fun. Yes, everyone will be at the table.
Yes, thank you for coming to the meeting.
Oh, sure. I gave her an out.
You did?
You didn't see my pulse. I told her on Facebook.
Oh, I didn't see it. I missed that.
You guys want to stay in this meeting forever or does someone want to make a motion?
I'll motion to the end. Second.
Marie, it is seconding?
Yep.
I'll second.
Robin too can second. Marie, Robin too.
All right, got it, thank you.
We have to vote. Lili?
I approve.
You're okay.
Approve.
Oh, we don't have to vote, Marie.
Approve.
I approve too. Okay, and I approve, so I'll see you all tomorrow night in your cars and then next week at the AOS and High School meetings.
Okay.
I think you're all-